Welcome back. We're following up on candidates interviews. Today we have Josh Ingram here. He's running for town council and Josh, just some of the rules of the game here is that you know, you get to talk about the five issues that you'd like to talk about that's affecting the town. We're not going to talk about any national issues. We're going to talk about purely local issues. And we want the audience and citizens to get to know you a little better and some of the things you think the town should be looking to correct or how you're going to handle certain situations that are coming into this. Josh, you're a relatively newcomer here, right?
Yes, sir. I've lived in town here for five years. I spent total of 17 years in 2020 here in Virginia as far as living as a full-time resident. I lived in Clark County for 10 years and I lived in Loudoun County for two years.
Okay, good.
And then I decided, you know, after some extensive travel through my work, that Front Royal was the place where I wanted to settle.
Yeah, it's a really nice place.
Absolutely. Yeah, it checks all the boxes for what it is I like about a town. It matches a lot of the same amenities where I grew up as well, which is in Southern West Virginia. So, but yeah, this town, like I said, has a lot to offer and I saw it five years ago and I still see it today.
Yeah. Well, Josh, I mean, you're a young man. Are you sure you want to get into this political mess? I mean, what drives you to wanting to get involved with us here?
Well, I've always had a history of community service through my family and in my past interactions with a lot of nonprofits. And I've got the experience in my career that I think I can really make a difference here for this town. And I've been very fortunate to live the life that I've had, both work and my hobbies. Of course, I'm a pilot as well, avid outdoorsman. But I've seen some issues in this town with the current establishment that, you know, it's caused a black eye for our town. You know, but I see when people come here, especially my friends, you know, my family that come here, they see Front Royal the way I see it and they're like, well, now we know why you moved here. So I just...
Well, they see the beauty, natural beauty.
They see the charm of the town. They see the people here, you know, the interactions of how the businesses are with folks compared to, you know, to a lot of the businesses in the east for that matter. Just yesterday, I was talking with a gentleman who came from Pennsylvania and he was overwhelmed at how the business is here. He said, everybody here was so friendly. And he said, you know, you don't see that here. I was like, well, that's how people are here. It's just, you know, I've recognized it since I've lived here and said, a lot of the residents that have lived here their entire lives, you know, they still live by that. So...
No, no, this is, you know, I grew up here and left when I was 18 and didn't think I'd come back and here I am. So it has a certain attraction that it brings back. And actually, as I become more mature, I enjoy the natural amenities even more than when I was a young man. So I can understand the allure, especially on your generation now where you guys are figuring out that it's probably better to be out away from the cities than to be in the cities with all the other stuff that's going on there right now. So I noticed that there's a lot of people from the city looking to Front Royal.
Absolutely. And they're looking for, you know, the same reasons that I've looked, came to come out here. The schools are good, the cost of living with the, you know, we have some of the lowest municipal costs in the Commonwealth for that matter. But yet we're an hour, hour and a half away from DC. You know, so if you live, you know, if you work in a business-based east of here, you can still live here. You know, of course, with the current COVID situation, we have a lot of workforce already here that's working remotely. So, you know, it's even better. But yeah, I mean, this town has a lot, a lot to draw across the board, you know.
Have you found that you could work remotely?
Absolutely, yeah. For my full-time job, I've spent more than half of my time working from home and then I have to go to my office in Ashburn occasionally. But as a project manager, I still have the occasional slight visit that I have to attend. But for the most part, the town here is, as far as what it has to offer, you know, Wi-Fi and amenities from my home office, you know, it's all in check.
Yeah. So I think we have that available for anybody who wants to come in and have that to attract people like that.
Absolutely.
Well, it's interesting. You were telling me you're a project engineer or you do a lot of project type of work, right?
Yes, sir. I am. I'm a project manager for a security integrator and we do access control systems, intrusion detection, CCTV systems. And a lot of what we do involves critical infrastructure for municipalities as well.
Wow. So you have infrastructure type of experience.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've, I'm actually involved with the FBI's InfraGuard team, which is, it's a panel of businesses and municipalities that collaborate together to figure out, you know, efficient ways to protect our critical infrastructure, such as our power grid and our utility services. For instance, you know, if somebody, God forbid, were ever to poison the water system, you know, it's, people don't think about that. But there are people like us that keep that in mind. So, but yeah, my career has been essentially involved around DC area, but I've traveled the world as well, working in foreign governments at the state level and even at their municipal level as well.
So how, with you, since you've traveled a lot, how would you compare this area to some of the places you've been traveling overseas?
Oh, there's no place like home. There's definitely no place like home. I've seen the best and worst.
Have you really?
Yeah. And I've always had an overwhelming sense of relief every time I come back home. You know, and just as I had moved here was when that part of my career had started coming to an end. But I would, of all the things I've seen across the world, I'll take the Shenandoah Valley and the hills here in Front Royal over anything. So...
Yeah, we kind of really, we really have the best of both worlds here. It doesn't get too hot, not too hot, it doesn't get too cold.
Absolutely.
You know, last year we only had like one snowstorm, so it wasn't so bad. And the temperate and you have the leaves and actually it's a pretty good place to be like right here, I think. You know, once the ice shelf falls off Antarctica and the ocean's raised 10 feet, we might have water property here pretty soon. So we might benefit. But anyway, I'm kidding on that, of course. So I've just noticed here, some of the questions you want to address today primarily deal with structure, you know, and infrastructure, which is, it sounds perfect because that's what your job is. And, you know, one of them we want to talk about, of course, is the water, the water situation that we have in this particular area. And it's a problem. And I think that problem and why it became such an issue for a lot of the citizens here was something that happened probably six or eight months ago, I lose track of time, where there was a group that wanted to put a bunch of apartments out on the 522 corridor and about, I think it was 125 apartments, and they were going to require a lot of water. And I think what that started was an issue of, do we have a water plan in Front Royal? And do we have enough water to send water outside into the county when we have a certain amount that we have to provide in the town? So I think water is a really big issue and I think it's going to continue to be a bigger issue because based on one of the plans that the planning commission had is that we have adequate supplies of water through 2025, 2030, but that's mainly for residential type of usage.
That's a very good point, Mike. Very good point.
And not for industrial use. So I'm giving you kind of, you know, the kind of the cliff notes here of what we think is going to happen. I don't know whether you've done any research on that or not, but...
Yeah, I've done a little bit digging into it and my take is on it, you know, you have to plan with water, the infrastructure that you have in place. Cause typically, you know, growth is going to, you know, depending on how you control that, if the growth comes in before your infrastructure can support it, you're going to come to a halt. And that's, word's going to get out really quickly about, you know, whether this town can support the businesses that it wants. So yeah, there definitely has to be a water plan in place. And what you pointed out is a key point in regards to residential accommodations. Yeah, I think that the town has room for growth for the next couple of years for residential growth. But as far as industrial growth, you know, that's a question that's going to have to be tackled. We're fortunate in the sense that we have an independent water system as it is now. We don't have to borrow water from a municipality like some of the neighbors we have here throughout the valley.
Unless the river runs dry.
Correct. Yeah. So, you know, and in turn that also keeps our utility costs low as well. So, you know, I think that, you know, in order to look at what businesses you want to draw here, you're going to have to have a water plan in place because obviously with some of the infrastructure that's being built east of here, you know, that's a big draw on the resources, as far as power and water goes. So, you know, it's something that we have to look at what's ahead as far as what we're planning to get, you know, and plan accordingly. This pandemic, of course, is throwing a curveball on a lot of us right now as far as businesses' growth. Because, you know, the fad now is that people are working from home more and more. So does that mean less law office buildings are going to be built? You know, who knows? I mean, we'll probably see more of it next year and a year after that. So, you know, you have to look at what, we have to look at what the town is looking to draw and plan accordingly.
No, I think you're absolutely right. You know, if you look how much usage there is in an industry versus, you know, residential, it's certainly a lot less for residential. I think the challenge that I would challenge you with, once you become a council member, is that, you know, we have property, we have land here for industrial growth within the town. And we have a commitment to provide water out of 522 corridor in that particular area. And I think we, I think that there was a plan to be able to accommodate them because they're mainly retail type of stuff, but not big industry. So I think you really have to watch what industries that you attract that's outside the town limits does not get away from your commitment to what's inside.
Exactly right.
Would you focus a lot of your energies on developing within the town itself?
Well, for right now, because as you just said, like I said, that's, you know, the town made a decision to accommodate that, you know, those entities, you know, a while back. And now it's coming to an impasse to where a decision has to be made. You know, so we have to figure out a way to accommodate that already. So, you know, we need to take care of the issue at hand before we, I think, before we look at anything grander than that, you know, so...
It's kind of like the old adage where you have to build, rebuild the foundation so you know what you can handle.
Exactly right.
And a project manager, you probably deal with that every day, don't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, that's great because that kind of ties into the next segment, which is you want to talk a little bit how to attract businesses and build economies within our town. You know, you've got to have enough water.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think the natural resource, we have enough electricity, we have enough power for it. So we have water, power. You also mentioned that, you know, we certainly have a labor force that could probably attract somebody. So I think we have all the basic components. What are some of your ideas of what you think we should do?
Well, I mean, we need to, and this is, we need to work with what we have with the county as well. You know, the current EDA that we have, whether the town's adverse view of it at this point matters or not, but the reality of the situation is the EDA is still there. It's still a viable source for influencing our businesses. And what can draw to the county is going to draw to the town and vice versa. So what's inherently good for one is going to be good for the other. So number one, we need to work with the county. Two, we need to promote, you know, we need to promote our low cost of taxes and low cost of municipal support. We are lucky, again, it goes back to having our independent water source and, you know, we have a power grid that we were able to draw from a larger entity, but we have a good enterprise zone set up right now that's in place. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it's with working the county, working with what we have as far as our utility and tax base, how low our costs are, and like I said, our workforce. You know, we have a substantial workforce here of people who commute often to east to go towards DC. I mean, yet even with the day situation, lots of people working from home, myself being an example. So let's see what we can get here to keep people home, you know.
I mean, that's maybe a political slogan. Keep people at home, you know, create businesses here so they don't have to go down to the river.
Absolutely. And we're close to DC. So, and like you said, we have the space here for industrial growth within the town limits as well.
Well, you have like, we have the Royal Phoenix or the area out there. You have, I think, about 600 acres out in Happy Creek that I'm aware of. You've got some other land right across from the hospital and you have all the development area that can go right down the new Leach Run Parkway. So I think that we have some pretty good attractive space here if you...
Even our real estate market has been very, has been very sustainable. Since I've moved here, you know, my house has gained value. And I think as a whole, and that's another draw too. I mean, if you invest now in real estate property in this town, there's a good chance you're going to, you know, you're going to come out ahead.
Get some real appreciation, huh?
Yeah, it's going to be some appreciation, even with the buildings and, you know, the current infrastructure we already have here, for even some of the buildings that are blighted for that matter. You know, there's opportunity there, you know, for investors to come in and, you know, utilize some of those properties perhaps. So...
So Josh, what do you think's holding us back?
Well, I think right now, people just need to know that we have, we already have what it takes. I don't think our current council's doing a very good job of letting people know what's going on. That's one of the reasons I'm running. The transparency of that we already have what it takes to do better, you know, that's one of the messages I'm trying to get out. That's my, you know, the first of my three points of running, you know, is transparency, you know, accountability and then vision. So, you know, they're all tied in together.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I agree with you. It doesn't seem to be a vision for the community. It seems like it's all reaction and no proactivity. So what is your vision for Front Royal? I mean, what do you, I mean, it all ties into economic development because as Covey says, you start with the end in mind. And so what is Front Royal look like for your kids that you want, you know, when you have kids or family, you want to stay here? What is that? What do you think Front Royal should be like from your, now, you have a younger perspective than a lot of someone like myself. All right. So, and you will eventually, and I'm waiting for all you guys to take over because my generation has screwed up things pretty well. So I'm already turning it all over to you to take care of it. So what do you think Front Royal should be?
Well, first off, we're going to try to keep it so we can get to your generation's point so we can look back and pass it along, right? So, I see Front Royal as being a town, you know, it's kind of a haven from the bustle of Northern Virginia, of Loudoun, Fairfax, to keep the charm that we have that draws people here, you know, to attract businesses, you know, the grassroots, you know, grassroots America that this town embraces. I mean, we have, we're fortunate in the sense that this town has been through every domestic and foreign conflict that this country's ever fought or fought. It's been with this town. And it's always come out stronger. And I look at it no different today as history's proved. You know, we've still come out stronger. It's already here. We already have the people, we already have the resources to do it. But I see this, you know, as a town where you can walk down the street, say hi to your neighbor, you know, you could grab dinner at one place, grab your dessert at another place. You know, we have, like I said, we have the workforce here. If we get the industry in place, you know, people can, you know, the people that live here can stay here and the people that want to come here and see the town for what it is as a destination town, which is another point I'm trying to make, instead of just a pass-through town, then, you know, that's what we should be. So...
Well, with that question, let me ask you. So you have a new job and your job is to be the project manager for Front Royal. All right. Now, it's kind of messy right now. They're calling you in because, yeah, the last guy wasn't doing such a good job. So now you're sitting here now and you have this project. And so what would you think the three things you would do?
Well, again, I'd look at what we already have in place as far as ordinance goes and as far as the way things are being ran. I would get our tourism back in check. I mean, about a third of our income or a third of our revenue is generated from tourism. I would, I would put in check current powers that are held by the town manager, I should say, or interim town manager. But I would, I mean, I would look at getting our situation straightened out with the county and...
And what way would you mean that?
Well, it's a good, yeah, it's a good point. I mean, I would, just the lawsuit, for instance, I would put that to a halt with the EDA. I think the town has spent a frivolous amount of money in lawsuits trying to, you know, trying to recover something that, you know, it's, you know, the town's own, the town's own lack of oversight had a lot, had somewhat to do with it, you know. And, but anyways, you know, I would, I would look into seeing that, you know, we keep, you know, we keep our budget in check, which as of now, based on what I've learned even as far as last night, our general fund is still fairly healthy. And, you know, I would keep the enterprise funding as independent as possible without trying to dip into that. But I would, you know, I would, you know, I would, like I said, I would look for ways to promote our town for drawing businesses. I would focus more on basically putting things back in order, you know, immediately.
Let me ask you a question because, you know, I love talking with you because like I said, you know, you're at an age where you can bring new ideas and not business as usual. Unfortunately, as we, sometimes as we mature, we get stuck in our own ways and it's hard to change. Just tell me, from your business, what businesses you think are hot in the industry today? I mean, what do you think the markets are that will grow unless they're in the next 10, 15, 20 years? What do you think they are?
Well, healthcare for sure.
Healthcare, I agree with that.
I think that's a given. Information technology is another, that we're, you know, we're in the corridor of I-66 here now that it's creeping out this way.
That's right.
So that's going to be bustling at least for the next 20 years. And also tourism. You know, that's, that's, again, I keep going back to about a third of our budget coming from that if I'm correct in that, in my research. So, you know, again, with the town's location, with the workforce that we have, you know, we already have what it takes. Again, I keep saying this, we already have what it takes to be better, you know. And, you know, it's, my take is on we just need to get a fresh perspective on things. I believe I can bring that to the table, like I said, with my experiences, with my career as, even as a project manager, my past community involvement. And like I said, I think that, you know, let's turn this town into a destination. You know, historically, it's always been a pass-through town.
Yes, that's true.
So that's what it was since its inception.
So let me ask you, let me interrupt. So if you want to make it, whether it'll stop, okay, which, what is your position on the EDA, the town EDA versus the current EDA? I mean, what do you, how do you feel about the town having their own or not having it or whatever?
The town has no business forming its own EDA at this point. No. The lack of oversight, that's, I think, has been well proven with the current EDA that we have. I don't see why, how we could justify forming our own. And furthermore, with the elimination of our, you know, the majority of our tourism department, the cost of administering such an authority, if it's going to come out of the town budget, how do you justify adding more government when you just deleted some of it? You know, and with the saying being to right-size our budget. So I'm kind of scratching my head at that, you know.
Well, I mean, either way, I mean, whether you want your own or you use the existing one, you know, that's the communication network that gets to the people to attract people and businesses and everything else.
Right.
I think we've seen that in the past, the current EDA has been more focused on not the town as much as it is as on around the county. There's nothing wrong with that, but I haven't seen a lot of focus on that. I know the Afton Inn sat down there on the corner for years and it was never marketed. And that was, that's a prime location. So what would you ask the, if you said, I don't support a town EDA but the regular EDA, what would you ask from the current EDA? What would you expect from them?
Well, I mean, we need to get, you're right. The town needs to be more involved in it. And I look at it from a standpoint that the town, I don't think the town really gave it the attention that it needed to. I mean, it's a Front Royal Warren County EDA. It's got the names of both parties in and of itself, right? But the overwhelming sense that I've gotten is that, you know, it's a two-way street. I know, you know, I can think of several instances where the town or the county's tried to reach out to the town and the town just, you know, kind of snubs them. So, yeah, I mean, it's already there. I think the town needs a better use of it. But here's an interesting factor, Mike. In the talks that I've had with some of the people that involved in it, you know, there's no official liaison between the town and county for any extent that really covers such a, you know, such an, you know, interactions like, to conduct interactions like that, which I find kind of, I find interesting. But, you know, so there's, with no clear channel of communication, then, yeah, I mean, it's going, that's the sense that you get. So...
But it really kind of goes back to the relationships with the town and the county.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, how they talk.
The recent scandal, yeah. That's obviously, you know, marred a lot of that. But I think that, you know, I think that the town, you know, has a role in it and needs to step up and play its role. So, you know, have more of an interest in it than what it has.
I think you want them as a partner.
Exactly. Exactly. As it should be, as it is, you know.
Actually, it is a partnership.
So, you know, again, it goes back, I keep saying this, you know, we already have vehicles in place that we can utilize, you know, and the town just needs to better utilize those resources.
Well, it sounds like a lot of your focus will be going into, you know, just tightening up everything, kind of looking at everything and...
Well, yeah, obviously. The first step would be to look at what you already have, you know, and see what you can fix, you know, the lowland fruit of what can be fixed. Of course, some of these lowland fruit pieces may be viewed by some as lowland fruit, maybe a massive effort by others. But, you know, at least make the effort and get things moving, you know, in that direction. So...
Well, let's shift. We've kind of gone through, you know, like how we're going to grow the business and your thought process and what Front Royal is going to be like, you know, in the next couple of years so you can do the preparations to get there. You might be here or you might be President of the United States. So, you know, we can never tell in the next 20 years what's going to happen. But, you know, there's also been a lot of lack of transparency, I would say, in this last council. And one of the examples that was, that came up as a concern on the list was the interaction between the town and the county in regards to the distribution of Cares money. And I might be wrong, but as I understand it, that the town decided to go out and distribute the money before they actually, and they went to the county to get them to give them and reimburse them that money. And I think on the video, it showed there was kind of a little dust-up between the town manager and the lawyer for the county of asking for justification, you know, of where did you spend the money? Because again, I don't know all the details. You might know more than I do. That there had to be a justification where you spent the money and how you spent the money because apparently there's some guidelines, I think.
You're right.
Which restricts them from doing certain things. So that kind of talks about transparency. What is your feeling on that?
Well, Mike, it's, if the funds that were distributed by the county, the county is actually being held liable for those funds. So whether the town makes any symbolic gesture of an agreement saying, hey, we'll be liable if these terms are misused, you know, we'll take the hit for it. The way the funds are being distributed, you know, they're not going below the county levels as far as accountability goes. So regardless, the county's held responsible for the funds, even through the use of the town. Now, the town did deep dip into its general fund, which I mistake as around $800 and some, $870,000 approximately. Could be off on that a little bit. But anyways, but the town decided to dip into its general funds and distribute those funds through the businesses for the sake of expediting the distribution.
Get it into the system.
Correct, get it into the system. Now, that might sound, you know, I think to a point that I would agree to that, you know, in that standpoint. But I think in the bigger picture, I think it was a bad call. Given our, given the town's current relationship with the county and obviously with the cross lawsuits and, you know, the situation with the police, the police department, I think the town, or I think, to kind of show me, I think the county has every right to scrutinize the town and its paperwork for distributing the funds. Had it been me on council, I would have voted to hold the funds for distribution until the town actually received them. I think that would have saved a lot of headache. I think we're only talking a matter of a couple of weeks, I think, in time difference, unless I'm wrong about that. But from what I've read into it, it seems like it wouldn't have been much longer for the town just to get the funds and distribute them. So I don't, I don't agree, overall, I don't agree with how that was handled. As of last night, it is the understanding of the town that a check was going to be mailed from the county to the town for around $600 and some thousand. As of yesterday, that check hadn't been received yet. But it did create some frustration for the staff of the town to have to go through and generate some additional documentation to receive those funds. But my take, I think it could have been avoided...
If they had done it in the first place.
If they had done it in the first place. So I, again, it goes back to, you know, spending what you already have, you know, and it could have seriously jeopardized the general funds that we have. Now, the town as a whole, based on what I learned last night, with our general funds, you know, with the revenue generated from the, you know, from the sales tax and the meals tax that we have here in town, the overall... know, from sales tax and the meals tax we have here in town, uh, the, the overall funding hasn't dropped as dramatic as, as.
So the pandemic hasn't had a, a big economic crush on us as maybe they have in other places?
Correct. We've been fortunate in a sense, now this gives credit to the businesses.
Right.
Uh, again, it's the people here, the people here are making the difference, right? So the businesses were able to adapt. Uh, now granted, there were some businesses that sadly that did take a traumatic hit, but as a whole, the, the businesses.
Kind of stayed steady.
Yeah, they, they stayed steady, but they, they did it on their own, you know? So we as a town are fortunate in a sense that the economic impact hasn't been as dramatic as initially anticipated. And I, and, and I understand from a standpoint of sending the funds out earlier based on that standpoint, but thankfully the numbers, and I think this is good news, they don't suggest, you know, that we're as bad off as initially thought.
Okay, well, that's, that's super, that's super.
Yeah.
Especially when you got some of these big costs coming up and things you have to pay for, so.
But again, to me, that, you know, having a look at the numbers now, you know, you have to look back and think, okay, well, how long, how long have we been tracking this, this trend of, of not being off as bad as we are? You know, was it enough to, to keep the funds until, you know, keep, keep, uh, the funds in hand and then distribute them? You know, that's a question that has yet to be answered, of course, but, but overall, had it been, had I had to say on it, I would have, I would have pushed to keep the, get the funds first and then distribute them.
Yeah, that's part of your transparency and then.
Correct.
Because what it did was it stirred up everybody.
Yes.
And then the question, then the questions start, whether they're really doing, are they doing something they're not supposed to? And like you, I agree with you, and the easiest thing would have been is just give them the documentation, take the money and.
Right.
And then, and whatever purpose they decide to do what they did, I.
Because it would have been easier to track at that point as well.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, and then the town's like, okay, we got the funds. And then the county, it leaves a lot of pressure off the county from having to, because then they all, all they got to do is look what's happening in real time instead of what happened in the past.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, I, I, I commend you for, uh, reaching out to the county because we are partners and, and there has been a change in leadership in there and, and we've seen a big change.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think this year was the first year we didn't have a tax increase. You know, they've got six or seven in a row.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're, they're, you know, getting down to doing business, you know, and doing the right things. And they're really working hard and I think that it has some good success. And I think it's the same thing, uh, with this council coming up, that you could probably really do a great job and giving them a different look at things than.
Well, I think it's time for the town to step up. And, you know, to add to your point, you know, the county has made strides in improving its standpoint with, with its personnel and, and, you know, with the changes it's made with the EDA.
Right.
And it's, it's, all of branches there.
Right.
You know, and, and again, what's good for the county is going to be good for the